Okay, we're back in session. It took longer, but I had to find a missing person. And now that I found her, we're going to get some clarification as to where we are in this budget process. Ms. Angelo, can you please tell us what work is left to be done?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, the Board has approved the line item changes. You have gone through the layoff list and given direction and approval on the layoff list, and then also on the external funding. So where we're at in the agenda right now is the position allocation table, which is just part of the process. We don't have to have that as an agenda item. It's part of the budget. And then the monitoring for fiscal year 2010-11, which basically is a discussion with this Board about how we proceed in assuring that the departments stay on budget and what the process is that this Board would like regarding the monitoring for 2010-11. We know that we have had some changes with our Budget Manager leaving, Mr. Knop coming on. I'm new in the Executive Office, so we wanted to give this Board the opportunity to give us further direction and comment around what you would like to see for the full year. It absolutely does not have to happen today, and in fact, could happen on September 14th or any other time. We put it as part of the agenda, thinking that if the Board chose and if there was time, we could discuss the monitoring. The big issue right now, though, is that this Board has not approved a final budget. And so where we're at with that is the final numbers being approximately $2.7 million. We initially thought we would achieve a $700,000 savings from the layoff list. We've not done that. So Mr. Knop and the Auditor will go back and look at the numbers. And where we're at is anything, the shortfall will be mitigated through internal borrowing. So we had said 1.9 million from General Reserves. We thought we would have to borrow a couple hundred thousand from the road fund, and then achieve the savings through layoffs. So whatever we don't achieve through the layoffs, then, we'll have to borrow from the road fund. So essentially, up to $2.7 million will be internal borrowing, and that is how we'll balance the budget this year.
Okay, so let me ask you another question, so you can answer this, and maybe it's a question for County Council. But all the actions we've taken today, if for any reason we get back to the 14th of September, and a supervisor decides that they want to address a change to it, it would take a four-fifths vote, is what I'm understanding. Now that we've taken these actions, this is done, even though we haven't taken a final action to approve a final budget.
At the conclusion of the public hearing on the budget, you should have a series of votes that you've taken, okay? You still have another one to take with respect to the borrowing and actually balancing the budget. Once you've closed the public hearing, and all of those actions that you have taken will be consolidated into, quote, "the final budget," which will be brought back to you on the consent calendar. And if there is a change between the time the public hearing is closed, if it's today, or tomorrow, or Thursday, or whenever, and the date that you take final action, that change will require a four-fifths vote.
Okay. So, everybody understand now?
So at this point, then, should there just be further deliberation on the budget, so the Board, if you choose today, could determine whether you want to adopt the final budget as it is with the $2.7 million, or thereabouts up to, the $2.7 million shortfall mitigated through the internal borrowing? You did adopt a resolution a few months ago that stated that the internal borrowing would be paid back as soon as possible through successful negotiations. So that is the process. That's what we're looking at, and that's the decision that this Board needs to make at this time.
Supervisor Colfax.
Yeah, a couple of things. I was listening very closely to what you were saying. You talked about 2.4 shortfall. Okay, and then you finished your last line, was "will be paid back." Internal borrowing will be paid back. That's been the position that you presented as of yesterday morning till now. So there's consistency there. What I'm not clear about is the Sheriff has told us, and I think we have to hear it, and that's why I voted against the budget as it stands right now, because he's told us what his situation is. So I have, and I have not heard, I did not get a full answer as to what the Sheriff understands is the situation with his budget, whether he's going to be $2 to $3 million if the negotiations are unsuccessful, somewhat successful, or very successful, and you define those options pro or con. So the question is, are we somewhere perhaps at the moment looking at $5.4 million shortfall come next year this time? Or are we talking about the, are we talking about $2.4 million? And if negotiations are successful, where does that money go? Does it go to cover the Sheriff's shortfall, which we're anticipating? Or does it go into the general fund? I think you said it goes into the general fund.
No. I would let the Auditor answer this question. Meredith, basically, the savings from wage concessions, it is my understanding that that savings goes back to the departments where the savings is achieved. The difference with the Sheriff's budget is that the Sheriff's budget is, the recommended budget is $18.8 million. And the way that the Auditor has booked the money into the budget is that it basically brings down the bottom line of those departments. And so it made sense not to take the 1.2 or 1.3 and bring the Sheriff's budget from 18.8 to 17.6 million. So basically, right now, there's 1.2 million that will be achieved through DSA savings that will be credited to the Sheriff. It doesn't go just to the general fund bottom line. It gets credited to the Sheriff. And Meredith?
I think the simple answer to your question, Supervisor Colfax, is that once labor negotiations do achieve labor concessions, the concessions would be quantified department by department, and their budgets reduced accordingly, so that the general fund as a whole does see that money being realized as savings.
And Supervisor Smith, there was another question, so I invite Sheriff Allman to come up and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of things. And first of all, I apologize for the 1.2 million misunderstanding. It was numbers that we didn't have at our office, and of course, we're very happy to know that it's going to be in our favor, and thank you for that. I would ask that when the final budget is prepared, or at the date the final budget is prepared, that we as Department Heads and also as we as citizens know the true amount that our bargaining units are given. If the DSA has given $1.2 million in concessions, I think that that's something that we're going to be quite proud of, and we're going to be able to tell the public in the realm of us getting accused of having huge salaries and huge pensions. I think that the citizens need to know what the employees are giving back to help our budget and our crisis, and I'm very proud of that. To be quite honest, there's two other issues that I know that Supervisor Smith has touched on today, and I, there was a, Ann Mulgar discussed the tax initiative, and I know that the supervisors find themselves in a legal position of not being able to sit up there and discuss how important it is. But I'm here to say that the tax initiative, Measure C, that's on the ballot this November, is critical. It's critical, not just for public safety, but for many other vital services. And I'm very proud to stand behind, support Measure C sign, and do everything I can to support it, because I'm glad there's a sunset clause on it. But our citizens need to know that the pain and anger that we've gone through this last two days is something that we're going to keep going through until we can just get our head above water. And that's all we're asking to do, get our head above water. And I don't believe it's a sinking ship, and I don't believe we're rearranging deck chairs. When you talk about 336 fewer employees, we're really making a difference. And one of the things I would love to see from this Board is some kind of mission statement of what happens when we get out of this mess. I know that it's too glorious to even think of right now, but when we got out of this mess, are we as Mendocino County leaders going to say, "Let's get back and do things the way we used to?" I hope not. Or are we going to say, "We've learned our lesson, and we're going to really and truly keep our leaner, cleaner, meaner ship going down the road there, going down the harbor." And one thing Johnny and you and I publicly disagree and agree on many, many things, but you made a statement today that it's up to the five of you to make these final decisions, and we're going to disagree on that, because there's five other electeds in this county, and there's 20 other Department Heads who make decisions every day that if it weren't for these decisions, there would have been red all over those numbers today. It would have been worse than what it was. And I know the Board appreciates the Department Heads, what they're doing, but there's people like Roland Sanford, who are, he's my new hero, who's going to stand up here and say what he said today. And I just, I get back to the analogy of the glass being half-full instead of half-emptied. We can get through this. And there's anger, there's emotions, there's everything else going through. Let's get through this, and let's learn from our lessons. But as far as the 1.2 million, I'm very happy that it's going to be credited to us, but you still have my firm commitment that Sheriff's Office is going to do everything we possibly can to come in at budget. That's my goal, to come in at budget. And if we come in at budget, we're going to party-hardy, I guess. But I just didn't want to give you the opinion or the statement today that the possibility of us going over budget is not a real possibility, because it is a real possibility, but we have people working on it every day, and we're doing everything we can to make it work. So I just wanted to close with that, and thank you very much, Madam Chair, for allowing me the five minutes to talk.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question going back to prior to the Sheriff's comments, to Ms. Angelo's comments, I believe asked by Supervisor Colfax, actually, who asked a question that related to the concessions, the concessions at the bargaining table, those that have been achieved and those that are still outstanding. And then I guess probably we need to go to the Auditor. I just, I want a clarification, because I wasn't sure that I heard it correctly. I want to understand, I mean, to me, that's a technical application, but it has policy, major policy implications in terms of how the allocations for dollars recovered in a concessionary process would be applied. So I want to understand, Ms. Ford, how, what you stated, and you said that you stated it, well, maybe you could just restate it, because I don't want to misstate what you said, with respect to the Sheriff's budget. What, how you dealt with that issue?
The Sheriff's, the DSA labor concessions, or the imposed 10%, that the Board imposed on the DSA bargaining unit, equals approximately 1.2 million, okay? I did not reduce the Sheriff and jail budgets by those dollar amounts, by that 1.2 million, due to the fact that this Board had significantly reduced the amount of funding that was going to the Sheriff and jail in the recommended budget.
Understood, but we've significantly reduced the amount of funding going to all departments. So did you handle it differently, like with respect, if there was concessions with respect to General Services, or to the District Attorney, or to any, in other words, are we applying it uniformly?
With respect to other departments, yes. With, to the Sheriff and jail, no.
Well then, I guess I don't understand that.
Well, there was, the CEO, Angelo, and I conferred, and we felt that it was completely unrealistic to reduce the Sheriff's budget by another 1.2 million, when he had already stated that he wasn't going to be able to operate, given the constraints that he had, and that he had no intention of laying off deputies. So there was a...
Well, I don't, I don't agree that that's a decision that you and Ms. Angelo would make.
Certainly, you as a Board could make that decision to do that differently.
It's a policy decision that should be made by this Board.
Absolutely.
I just feel like, in terms of a budgetary process, the only way to handle it, given that it is all supposed to be transparent, we're having all these discussions in open session, we've made many decisions that certainly I haven't even voted for, but in terms of the process, it all really happens here. And I just don't agree that we should have basically different accounting methods, or a different application. In other words, that is a clear public policy determination. It's not an accounting practice? Would you agree with that, if you're deciding it can go here, it can go there, and you make a decision that's...
Well, it wasn't my decision alone. It was a joint effort.
With Ms. Angelo?
Yes.
Well, I would like to call halt to the budget process just on that, just on that basis, because it calls into question really what we're doing here, and again, transparency for the public. If it works for one department, it should work for all. And so if we have a process of how we're going to apply concessions, we need to do it across the Board equally. If you handled it right for the Sheriff, then that's the right way to handle it for every department, because that's what concessionary bargaining is about, and that's what budget creation, budget implementation, and budget management is about. So I just feel very strongly that we need one accounting methodology, pick which one, you know, I think then what we should have is the discussion where you can tell us, and Ms. Angelo, and others, what are the various components that we go into? How does it impact the budget? Let's have, let's have a lengthy PowerPoint discussion about the implications of how it's done. But I believe very strongly, you do it one way, you do it the same for everybody in the county. It's not fair to the other departments to handle it differently. If the Sheriff's been handled one way, then it's right to handle all the departments that way. And then we deal with what the numbers are on the Board. That's just, I'm surprised.
So Supervisor Smith, then...
Shocked, actually. I'm shocked that we're finding this out now.
Supervisor Smith, then, maybe that is another item that we'll take discussion at another time.
Well, prior to the budget being voted on, we need to, we need to know, because it's part and parcel of the budget. It's, I mean, we're talking millions of dollars of concessions that either have been achieved or on the table.
Supervisor, yeah. You made a point.
Okay.
I'm just asking you a question. I don't think this, I think we need to move forward.
Tomorrow? I mean, do we discuss it tomorrow, or Thursday?
Well, let's let the other Supervisor McCowen, and then Supervisor Pinches, but I think that is a bigger discussion someplace else down the road. We need to get through this budget today, and that brings in another probably eight hours of discussion. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think rather than belabor the point endlessly, we're all aware of what the issue is. We're aware of the option that has been presented in the recommended budget that is in front of us, and I support the actions that have been taken. And I think we could start there. You know, we should just each state what our position is with regard to it. If we support the recommendation that the salary concession not be an additional reduction in the Sheriff and jail budget, then we need to take no action. That's already factored into the recommendation in front of us.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, whether you're talking about the Sheriff budget, the jail budget, or the general fund allocation, it's all the same pot of money. And, you know, the reality of it is, it's, we've, the two bargaining agreements, DSA and the McLima, they are probably 99% affected by the Sheriff and jail budget. So I don't, there's no secrets here in how the process work, and how, where the funding and everything goes. And I think that's really, that's all that's relevant to this point. I mean, it's, it's been made real clear by the Sheriff that, you know, what, what he might run up as far as a overrun in his budget. And already, we've probably, of what that projected amount may be, we've probably already identified to where we can save, or we can, where we can cover probably three-quarters of that already. So I don't want to be alarmist on this issue. I think it's, I think the important part is that the Sheriff's stated, and all Department Heads, that they do their damnedest to operate within their operating budget, because especially in the future, there's not, there's going to be no reserves or anything. So if at any time in the history of this county for Departments, and all Departments, to operate with their budget or below their budget if they can, it's imperative.
You're absolutely correct, Supervisor Pinches. Supervisor Colfax.
Well, I'm surprised my colleague sees it all as so clearly in the budget that's before us, because I'm as shocked as Supervisor Smith to hear that we have one way of allocating funds for the Sheriff's Department. We have a different process for allocating, so give now and you get it back later. Or no, give now and you don't get it back, because it's going somewhere else. And I don't care which direction it goes in at this moment. But for us to sit up here and pretend that Mr. Thurston, the Sheriff, Colfax, and Smith, all of whom experienced a little bit of surprise today, I think I can, I'm not speaking for these gentlemen, but that we're surprised to discover that this is something that has been decided by our Auditor and our CEO. The Auditor doesn't work for us, but the CEO certainly does. And I'm just stunned that that would have been something that was taken, as something, well, we'll do it. I can understand why you would do it. There's a logic inherently in it. But, I mean, what's it say about the rest of the employees, and what about the rest of the managers who have worked their tails off to pull together things that will succeed in solving this? This is, you want to demoralize people? Boy, I can't think of a more brilliant strategy. So I am shocked, and I think this requires a discussion, but let's not pretend we knew it all along, because at least a couple of the parties involved here, and a couple of Supervisors, have said, "Oh, is this what it is?" Well, some say it's good, some say it's bad. But I'm just saying, it is not the way to proceed, and as a tactic or as a strategy for getting things done in this county, it's not a good way to go at all. So I would like to put this off. I'd like to suggest that we get out of here today, because it's been pretty, I don't know that we'll accomplish a whole lot more than we ordinarily do, which is not very much in many, in much better settings.
In my opinion, we need to move forward with this budget. I don't think more time is needed. If we're going to get into discussion in that detail, then I want to go back to the Board of Supervisors and talk about us and our salaries, because I'm dismayed about the fact that there are some of us taking 10% off and others that are not. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that little or nothing would be gained by further delay. I think we should move forward today. And one thing we might talk about, since you brought up the Board of Supervisors' budget, is I think that we could, if there were three votes for it, we could reduce our personal travel stipends and our communication stipends by 10%.
And I think there are those of us that have been very diligent in trying not to spend anything.
I actually think all five of us have been conservative in using the discretionary money for travel and so forth. I know that even those who file claims for reimbursement don't file claims for everything they're entitled to, and some don't file any. So I'm not sure it would really represent that much of a loss, but if I do hear support for such a motion, I'd be happy to make one.
I'm not going to go there right now.
Okay, then, alternately, I would like to hear a clear explanation. In order to move this forward, I believe all we need is a motion to adopt the final budget for 2010-11, based on the discussions, the majority or consensus decisions that we have made today, which would be incorporated into the final 2010-11 budget, which would come back for adoption on September 14th, 2010.
Do you feel, County Council, do you feel that's a proper motion? That will cover second.
Okay, Clerk, did you get the motion? Further comment? I have, is your marker up? Supervisor Smith.
Do you want to invite public comment, please?
Why don't you go ahead, make your statement? Anyone else that would like to come up, public comment to this motion? As soon as Supervisor Smith is through, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern is this new information coming forward, and with the clarity of the Auditor on the questions asked, and I really want this clear for the public. It means that we're going through concessionary bargaining, and the Auditor and the CEO have made a decision to handle it one way with respect to DSA, and I'm assuming McLima, the bargaining units that affect the Sheriff's, although they're SEIU members in the Sheriff's Department. And so we have one accounting method that's being applied for a couple bargaining units, but we're not going to apply the same methodology to the other concessions that we're hoping to gain, some of which we already have gained, going forward. I think this is, this is an egregious, this alone is something that I think, never mind the other components of the budget, I had a couple here. I wanted to get to Stacy Cryer and the CEO's very direct comments about mental health and its direction, and there could be budgetary implications. I think we need to have that discussion before we pass the budget, not after. I think we need to go to the questions that Ms. Mul...
Mulgar.
Mulgar raised, in addition to Ms. Cryer, and talk about more of the leveraging aspects before we get down to the basic dollar line items and how we're balancing the budget. I wanted to have those discussions, but now there's a motion on the table, so we're precluded from having that. But I really want this into the public record, that the budget balancing is being accomplished by not a one-size-fits-all with respect to the concessionary process, the millions of dollars that will be gained at the bargaining table, hopefully, some of which has been. And so it's being applied differently when the numbers, when the Auditor gets the numbers, when those concessions are achieved, it's being handled one way within the Sheriff's budget, and a different way for everybody else. I think that is clearly wrong. I don't think you'd get any outside budgetary people to come in and say that that's a best practices method. So I think if it fits for the Sheriff's Department, then I think we ought to come back and have the budget discussion and have that, and I'm not arguing that that's a wrong way to do it, but if it works for the Sheriff's Department, it's good for GSA, it's good for the Auditor's Office herself, it's good for the District Attorney, it's good for, it's good for all our Departments. And then we ought to look at budget numbers. That's fair, that's equitable. So I think it's a big mistake to go down the path and adopt this budget today with this very clear, I think egregious, component to it that I was unaware of. No one ever described that to me. And I, I think it's just, it's clearly wrong. It's not transparent, it's not the way we should be doing business, and we absolutely shouldn't go down this path. And I really want the public to take note that it's not being done in a transparent manner, when we had to ask certain questions and get that out on the table, that it was being applied differently. And it's wrong.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Wait a minute, I just want to clarify that you're also directing staff to return on September 14th for Board adoption of the 2010-11 budget with the position allocation table. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, so we are going to vote, we're going to vote.
Public comment.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Meredith.
You got to close the public hearing.
I'm rummy. We will close it in just a sec. We can't have public comment until after that, and then we'll have to close it. Come forward, please.
Meredith Lynn Tott, District Attorney. Obviously, it came as a surprise to the Sheriff's Department. It definitely came as a shock to my department, as well as to others, because we became aware last week that our budgets were basically being cut again, after I'd taken out $730,000. We come in on Monday with new numbers, trying to figure it all out, and the process was not across-the-board or fair or transparent. It simply wasn't. Now, it sounds like the Supervisors, you know, are fine with that, because they're supportive of the Sheriff's Department. That's great, because I'm supportive of the Sheriff's Department as well. But you need to have that transparency, because we're looking at budgets, we're looking at a fact that the Sheriff went up 2% something the year before, so the numbers he started with were higher. My department got cut three years in a row. I'm going to be short once Jill Ravitch leaves to become Sonoma County District I'm going to be short once Jill Ravitch leaves to become Sonoma County District Attorney, three top-level attorneys that we need to prosecute crime. And how am I going to come back? I'm just supposed to do it. I support the sheriff, and I support what he's doing, but I think we need to find out at least what the numbers are, because others, it wasn't across-the-board 10%. We've come over and over again, month after month, we're all giving 10%, we're all giving 10%. That's absolutely not true. And certainly, it's not, you know, we're not, I'm not focusing on the Sheriff's Department because other departments weren't cut either. But I think you need to look at that, and it's fine. I agree with what many of you are saying today, that this is where we want to put our priority. That's great. So put your priority there, but let's have it be clear. And let me be clear, I understand that obviously Sheriff's Department wasn't aware that all the other departments were being cut. And that is what it adds up to after we'd already given. So, you know, maybe it's time to go ahead and vote, but let's make sure when the budget is passed that we're clear on that, because I already told you yesterday, I'm in the same position as the sheriff is. I really don't see how the District Attorney's Office can continue sending dangerous people to prison when we're not funded so that we have attorneys that can do the job. So I just wanted to say that. And again, we heard many times today, with all due respect to all involved, I certainly think everyone was trying to do the best and most logical job, so there's no problem there, but we just need to have all the facts out, so we all understand the process. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Please come forward, state your name for the record. I know you have three minutes.
Norm Thurston, Administrative Services Manager for the Sheriff's Office. I'll be very brief. I'd just like to say that I think this board gave direction sometime back that no deputies would be laid off, and I think the action taken by the auditor and the CEO is consistent with that direction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Seeing no one, we're bringing it back to the board. We do have a motion on the floor. I guess we need to, before we vote on that, close the public hearing. Is that correct, County Council?
Take direction.
And then close it? Okay, it's different, it's different for this hearing than it is for others?
Yeah, it's not like the normal hearing.
Not, okay. All right. Excuse me. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for the record, the District Attorney budget is not being cut $730,000. That's the amount below the request the DA made. The actual cut is $380,000 from last year's budget, which is a 10% reduction.
Supervisor Pinches.
Ben, listen to this. I want to get real clear on this issue. We are told here that if we adopt this budget, because we're going to do somewheres in the neighborhood of two and a half million dollars of internal borrowing, right? And we're told that labor negotiations, successful labor negotiations and givebacks from the employee groups was going to pay back that deficit, right? Now, did I understand correctly that the 1.1 million in DSA savings through labor negotiations is going to be automatically allocated to the Sheriff's Department? If that happens, then how are we going to pay back the two and a half million dollars in internal borrowing?
The two and a half-
I want to be real clear about this, because this is a real relevant issue. Because if you allocate it back, I'm not picking on the sheriff's budget or any other department, whether it's any HHSA through, if we get a negotiation settlement through, say, SEIU. If we allocate that back to departments, then how are we ever going to pay back our two and a half million dollars in, in, in internal borrowing? We can't. The short answer to that is we can't.
It's not, it's not being allocated back to the sheriff. It is going to help him meet his assigned net county cost. Now, if you want to slash the sheriff's budget, another 1.3 million-
No, his, his allocated cost is what's in the budget book, what we're adopting here today. That's going to be his work plan, his allocated budget.
It is not adding 1.3 million to the sheriff's allocated budget.
That's what I want to be real clear on.
Okay, gentlemen, Ms. Angelo, please go forward with your comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I think that the, the savings is credited back, and so that's what's happened throughout. The, the difference with the sheriff really was that his budget, as Supervisor McCowen said, was 18-8. So on paper, we would say, and we could, we could give it to the board and ask for you to vote on this, which would then say on paper that the sheriff's budget is 17.6 million. So, you know, every department, if you have SEIU employees and there are wage concessions, to the extent that you have those SEIU employees, that's credited back. It's the same thing. DSA savings would not get credited to HHSA or anywhere else. I mean, there was, there was nothing here that I believe is really different than anything that was done with MTO savings or any other savings. It hasn't changed the process.
Carmel, I think you're missing my point. My point is, we have been told here, all the way from the recommended budget right till now, that we're going to adopt this budget with, with about two and a half million dollars of internal borrowing. And how we're going to pay that two and a half million dollars back was through salary savings that we're getting through negotiations, right? Am I right so far?
You're right.
Now I'm hearing that the 1.1 million dollars that we're getting from salary savings through DSA and McLeA, which are already contracts, we know we have them because we've already reached agreements on. So what you're saying is that that's going to be allocated to the sheriff's office? If, I'm not saying I don't support that, but if we do handle it that way, then how are we going to pay back the two and a half million dollars in internal borrowing?
With the new concessions.
Do you understand my question?
The new concessions.
You see?
That's why I raised it.
Because frankly, we can't depend on, we have got McLeA and agreements from McLeA and DSA. That's public knowledge. We know what that's going to be. We can't count on any other. So, so that might maybe be the biggest chunk we have to repay back our two and a half million in internal borrowing. But isn't that the plan of how we're going to pay back that two and a half million deficit is through labor negotiation savings? Hasn't that been the plan all along? Now I'm hearing, no, we're going to allocate that to the sheriff's office? If we do that, how are we going to pay back the two and a half million in, in, in internal borrowing? It's really simple. It's only about third-grade stuff here.
Okay.
And I need to, I need to answer to that.
I figured it out, too. I figured it out, third grade.
Do you want to comment, Meredith?
They, there are still labor negotiations that are going on. That was what we were counting on with the, the internal borrowing that we've got built into the current budget that you're, you're trying to adopt. There are still SEIU negotiations, confidential's, McP and McPaw. There are still negotiations going on, and I anticipate that as those labor agreements are, are achieved, that the savings then would be credited back to the, the internal borrowing that you're proposing here. That's-
Then if you're assuming those are going to be credited back to pay the internal borrowing, then what about this 1.1 million for DSA? That's going to be a big chunk of our savings.
As, as Ms. Angelo stated, you can certainly bring that up and, and treat it differently, but we felt that due to the reductions that had already happened, and then with Sheriff Almond's statements today, he already expects to be two to three million over.
The reason I'm real concerned about this, this is my eighth budget that I've been involved in, to where I'm actually voting for a budget that isn't fully balanced out, the expenditures with the revenues. We're, we're allowing two and a half million dollars of, quote, "internal borrowing." That's not a balanced budget. We're, we're balancing it with the internal borrowing of two and a half million. And I'm fine with that, because I really felt that we were going to make up that two and a half million through labor negotiating contracts, which with just the DSA's, we've stated here many times today, we've got a million point one already there, and a certain amount with McLeA. And we got to the bargaining. But there's no guarantee that we'll get any more labor concessions. So now I'm hearing that this 1.1 million is going to be assigned to the sheriff's office, so that leaves us zero to pay back the two and a half million dollars in internal borrowing. It can't work that way. I'm not going to vote for this budget unless, to me in my mind, there's a clear plan that we're going to, at some point in time, that we're, we're on, not on a cash bookkeeping system, we're on a cruel bookkeeping system. So as long as it happens in the fiscal year, it'll be fine. I mean, whether these labor negotiations take six months more or whatever, I'm fine with that, and I'm fine with this internal borrowing. But I got to know that we, that the money's got to go back in to pay that. And what I'm hearing today is, it's not. And so I want to get this commitment done right now before, I'm not going to vote for this budget unless I'm real clear on this. Because I'm not going to vote for an unbalanced budget with an open end.
So I would ask the auditor, we can, there's something we can do differently. I think when it's all said and done, I really do believe the numbers will come out the same. But the option then would be that we take the DSA savings and we put it against the deficit, then the recommendation from the CEO is that the sheriff's budget, that this board adopt a budget with the sheriff's budget at 17.6 million dollars. And then where, that would be the same treatment as every other department. Am I right, I'm asking the auditor?
Yes, you're correct. And that would bring our deficit to the 1.5.
I don't get it that way. I don't see why we have to reduce the sheriff's budget, because his budget numbers don't reflect any savings in the salary reductions anyway. So we don't have to reduce his budget.
Meredith, could you?
Madam Chair.
You never reflected-
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Please, please. Supervisor McCowen.
Yeah, I'd just like us to work through this here. I believe when we-
That's what I'm trying to do.
Right. So I think that we had a working number of 4.8 million that we were intending would be largely closed by salary savings. And unless I'm mistaken, thus far, we've realized about 2.1 million in salary savings, including the DSA and the McLeA. And that is, is what has reduced the budget gap to about 2.7. And then we've taken another chunk out of that with the layoff list that we approved today. And so then, it's that balance essentially that we're doing the internal borrowing with. And we do still plan, Supervisor Pinches, I wish you were listening to this.
I am, I am.
Okay, since you're the one that asks the questions. So I believe we're on track, assuming that we move forward and we achieve salary concessions with the other bargaining units, we are on track to recover essentially the same amount that we're now gaining through internal borrowing. So I think we are on track to do exactly as you say you think we should, Supervisor Pinches. We have a plan, and we've been following it. And I'm sorry that not everybody was clear on how this is all working, but it's been clear to me all along that salary savings were, was what was going to close the budget gap, and in fact, I think that's what we're doing.
Supervisor Pinches.
Give me just a minute here.
Okay, Supervisor Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree, Supervisor McCowen, salary savings, we're going to close the gap. But what, what I think has been uncovered in these discussions is it's not being applied. It, it creates a major budgetary shift, and it's not being applied in an equitable fashion. If the auditor's going to credit concession dollars that are achieved, it either should go one way or the other. Either it goes to bring down the general fund, or it's disseminated back to the departments. That's, that's the only point I'm making, and I, if it works for the Sheriff's Department, that's great. If that's the best way to do the accounting method, great, but then let's apply it the same way to the other departments. That's, that's my only point. To come in and have a budget that we're talking about being balanced, but we find that it's not being treated, we're not, it's just not the way you do it. You don't, you don't, it's bringing forward then a false sense of what the budgetary numbers are. It's, it's obfuscating the real facts of the situation, and I think that that's, that's unfortunate. It's more than unfortunate, it's just not how you do it. It's not good for the public. The decision-makers had to sit here and find out about it. Irresponsible, bad public policy, just all the way around. A very embarrassing situation.
Okay, Supervisor Pinches.
In our recommended budget, the combination sheriff and jail budget is 18, roughly 18 million, $750,000. There is no reason to reduce that budget amount from the sheriff at this time. There's no reason. All I'm saying is that this, and correct me if I'm wrong, the salary reduction savings that we achieved through McLeA and DSA, you say amount to a little over a million, 100,000, right? Okay. That, that will be reflected, because that's not shown in this budget document, right?
It's not shown in this budget.
That's what I'm saying. So that would be like extra revenue. So that would go into the general fund to help pay back the two and a half million. That would, that doesn't affect the sheriff's budget of 18 million, $750,000 roughly. We don't need to reduce the sheriff's budget beyond what his recommended sheriff and jail budget is. All we have to do is, when we get those salary savings, that will be reflected as savings to the general fund, which will pay back the two and a half million in internal borrowing, or that portion of it. That's all I'm saying. I don't see where we have to change anything, we just need to make sure this direction is clear. Because if, if we get a 1.1 million from, which we've got from the DSA and salary, and if we plug that back into the sheriff's office, then certainly the sheriff would, would like that, and I think everybody would like it, give him 1.1 million dollars. But then how would we pay back our internal borrowing? It gives us no revenue for that. So we can't put it in there. The sheriff is going to have to operate on his 18 million, $750,000 budget roughly.
That's right.
Otherwise, we have no way. If we do it any other way, we don't have no way to pay back the internal, internal borrowing. And I'm not going to vote for a budget that doesn't have, that doesn't close, close the gap, because otherwise, we're going to head down that road, and where are we going to be next year? I may or may not be here. But we can't start out with a four or five million dollar deficit. Well, I mean, Supervisor Colfax talks about bankruptcy. So I see it, this is the only way, maybe this is a policy, but between the CEO's office and the auditor, we have to do it this way. Otherwise, we have no plan. And you know, and how are we going to look at our audit exception this year, that when we have this open-ended two and a half million dollar budget and with no plan to pay it back? What are the auditors going to do about that? And what would our credit rating be? We can't do it that way.
Supervisor McCowen.
Madam Chair, Mr. McCowen has responded without recognition by you twice now in this discussion.
I'm sorry, I did not see your-
No, I'm asking, I'm asking-
I will defer to my colleagues.
Thank you, thank you. I, you know, you made your opinions very clear, your attitude toward a couple of supervisors here today, so I would appreciate being given the same courtesy as you give one of your allies. Mr. Pinches, Supervisor Pinches? What you're pointing out is the fact this money cannot go to two places. That's the beginning and the end of this discussion. We don't have to belabor it. If you don't understand that, then your ideology and your preferences and your antagonisms get in the way.
Remember the code of conduct, please.
Okay, please. I, I'm sorry, I apologize to you, Supervisor Colfax. Where's your pen?
It's on.
It's, okay. I didn't see it up, I apologize. Okay, so where are we going from here? County Council, can someone call the 5:30 rule with a motion on the floor?
We need to vote.
Can we get this policy question answered once and for all?
Here's what I suggest. I think, you know, maybe everybody needs to calm down, and either we take a dinner break and come back and finish this up, or you continue to tomorrow, but you need to deal with, you know-
This is a very simple question I asked, very simple. It should have a 10-second answer. I think Supervisor Colfax is right, you can't put the money, you know, we can't put it in the sheriff's budget and then pay back our two and a half million dollar in, in internal borrowing. You can't do it. You got to put the money one way or the other. Figure it out, make a decision.
And that's a question for the auditor. And that's a question for the auditor, and she's given you a response, so the board needs to make a decision.
It's actually our decision to make.
Right.
And, and the question is, do you want to reduce the sheriff's budget by the amount of the salary savings? Or do you prefer to hold the sheriff to the recommended budget that we adopted in May and that we would be reconfirming today? And then the salary savings will help him meet that budget, because he'll have fewer costs. But it's not going to add money to his budget. And we will still be able to repay the internal borrowing through additional salary savings from the other departments. Because that money has not yet been deducted from their budgets because the negotiations haven't taken place. So the alternative to the motion on the floor is to come back and say, we want to approve a layoff list of probably about fifteen deputies.
I just want to hear from the auditor, I guess, more than anything, that if, through what we're about to do here, the sheriff and jail budget has their recommended budget, okay. But the salary savings through labor negotiations, all of those salaries will go into the general fund to be, to pay back, to pay back the internal borrowing and not be reallocated to the departments, any department.
I believe that the plan is that any subsequent labor negotiations that happen would be credited back then to the internal borrowing, just as Supervisor McCowen states. The, currently, the way the budget before you is built, the one point two that was realized with DSA negotiations or imposition, was not reduced from the sheriff's budget. You, as a board, can say, take that one point two and credit it back to the deficit, if that's, if that's your position. That would reduce the sheriff and jail budget to seventeen, whatever, seventeen six? So, that, that's certainly your, your choice to do so. My thought is that, that from this point forward, the savings achieved from labor negotiations would be credited back to the departments, therefore credited to the internal borrowing.
The problem with that is, Meredith, from this day forward, we may not get any more budgets or, or labor negotiations savings. That's the problem.
That's correct.
So then where do we pay back this two and a half million?
Then your default position should be more layoffs.
I don't want to go there either. I just think that we leave the sheriff and jail recommended budget where it's at, and they'll operate within, with that, with that budget. And the money we get through the labor, labor negotiations, all of them, will go to pay off the internal borrowing. Wherever, you know, well-
But, but it can't work that way Supervisor Pinches. The, the money to go to pay back the internal borrowing has to come from somewhere. And it would have to come from the sheriff's budget, if that's what you chose to do. If you chose to take that one point two million in, in DSA savings and credit it to the internal borrowing, that would reduce the net county cost in the sheriff and jail to the seven, seventeen point six million. It would effectively take more money away from them to be able to operate for 2010, 11.
I don't see how it would take more money away, because you're paying them, you're going to pay them the 10% less. So I don't see how it would take any more money or, or change his operation.
What is in his-
He's still going to have the deputy out there on the street, they're just making 10% less.
And what is in the budget now at eighteen point eight? Sheriff Almond has stated it is not enough to pay the, the positions that he currently has. So that if we cut it by one point two million, which is, is what the DSA negoti, or DSA imposition would, would do, that would even give him less to operate on and would put him in a position of having to lay off more individuals, if that's what he chose to do. I don't think the board, though, can tell him that he needs to lay off people. I don't think you can do that. I think it's the, the elected officials' prerogative to try to live within the budget that you give him. So, where we are is, is at eighteen point eight in, in assigned county cost at this point. If you choose to apply the DSA imposition to that, the, the net county cost would reduce to seventeen point six, and that would be what he'd have to operate within.
Well, one thing's for sure, we gotta have a plan to pay back our internal borrowing. That's a fact.
And I support that.
So then if that was the plan, then why was he assigned this net county cost that's here? How come this comes up at the eleventh hour?
Well, it's the same plan that it's always been.
Right.
And I believe the plan still is, we will pay back the internal borrowing through additional salary savings. And then it's our job to achieve those. And, but those are the choices. I mean, it's been stated very plainly, if you want to take the one point two million in salary savings from DSA and McLeAmen and apply it to the internal borrowing, then there has to be a commensurate reduction in the approved eighteen point eight for the sheriff and jail budget. And I don't think we want to go there. But that's the choice. And so I, I think you hold the budget at eighteen point eight for the sheriff and recognize that the salary savings is what helps the sheriff meet that budget without having to lay off personnel. Which I don't think we want to lay off any of the jail personnel or any of the field deputies. So if you don't want to lay them off, you have to let the salary savings go to help meet the net county cost that's been assigned to the sheriff. It's, it's the same as all the other choices we've had today. We don't have good choices, we don't have clear choices, it's the best choice we have in front of us.
But what are we going to get to? How are we going to tell our auditors? And how are we going to, then that basically threw us out our whole plan for how we're going to pay this internal borrowing?
No.
Out?
We still have four labor units to go. And we expect to achieve additional savings thereby. And currently, those amounts are, whatever savings we would achieve are built into this budget that we're talking about right now.
Okay. Gentlemen, Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't think also, to, to address the, the bargaining situation in a very, very cursory, general way, I don't think this is how you build trust with the bargaining units. Because it's not, I mean, they have a linkage to their departments, and when you treat one bargaining unit and its application of one point two million dollars in one manner, and then you take all the other bargaining groups, and, and it's, it's like de facto public policy creation? And it's like not been driven by the board of supervisors, it's been organized and, and worked out between the CEO and the auditor to go down a particular path that sort of massages the numbers. It is not, it's just not fair. It is not how you build trust. It's, it's just not what you do to, to try to gain the support of these other bargaining units that are coming forward. I, I, why, why would they want to enter into this process when it, it really is clearly not in their own interest to do so? I mean, it's not gaining their support. We want them to be, we want to work as a team, we want support from our employees and from our labor groups, but this kind of discussion and this kind of budgeting doesn't achieve that. We're going in the wrong direction. It creates adversarial bargain, bargaining instead of interest-based bargaining. It's just wrong again, from that perspective of public policy, it's not how you do it.
Supervisor Colfax?
No, I don't hear my turn.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
So then, we're back to the basic question of should this one point two million in salary savings be deducted from the sheriff's budget? Resulting in a net county cost of seventeen point six million instead of the eighteen point eight that we're currently looking at, which has actually been adjusted down to about eighteen point five, I think, based on the auditor adjustments. So it'd really be down to about seventeen point four. So if you want to reduce the sheriff's budget to seventeen point four, or five, or six, vote against this motion. If you want to retain the sheriff's office-assigned net county budget at eighteen point eight million, you would vote for the motion. I don't think we can ask the sheriff to take additional hits if we expect him to continue the jail staffing at the already minimal level and to continue patrol at what is pretty much a minimal level. So I don't, I've never favored more draconian cuts to the sheriff's budget. Some on this board do. But that's, that's the choice. It's vote for this budget, or let's come back and vote to further reduce the sheriff's budget.
Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know Supervisor McCowen, I, I don't think that there's anyone on this board that supports draconian cuts to the sheriff's department or any other department. I think that is absolutely irresponsible as a comment. And there's many reasons to vote no on the process that we're at now, and it goes way beyond the sheriff's budget. I, my point is, is I would like to take a break, and I think we ought to have the auditor and the executive office bring us back the numbers if we do the same applicability of savings. What, and then really have the robust discussion that comes with the appropriate application of those dollars. I, I'm not saying don't apply it to the sheriff's office, but then let's apply the other cuts to those departments as well, that's all. I, you know, then we'll see where we're at. But I, I just don't think you, you slipped that comment in Supervisor McCowen at the end of the discussion and have it go not addressed. That's not the point at all. The point is above-board, fair application of a technical skill, a tech, technical position that the auditor has to do. And there's been a, a decision that's been made to do it one way in this, with this group. Oh, well, just because, because this department might be over, and we just figured that that was a good way to do it. It is extremely patronizing, it's irresponsible, and it's not what an executive office does or an auditor does. We need to have the discussion here. So I would like the numbers to come back where we apply all of the concessions to the various departments. If it works through the sheriff's office, then let's bring it on for the other departments, and then let's see where we're at. Yes, it will create a problem, there'll be a huge gap, and we'll have to figure out what to do. But let's be equitable about it.
Okay. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I, I didn't appreciate Supervisor McCowen's comment either, but it's the truth. So, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm not prepared to reduce the sheriff and jail budget any lower than what's there. I, I have concerns, like I say, this is the first time, I will support the motion. This is the first time I voted for a budget at this period of time. I guess you could say it's a balanced budget, but it's the first time I've ever, in my eighth year, this is my eighth budget, that I've ever voted for a budget that has internal borrowing to it. But I'm not so sure we have any real choice in, in the interim. It just, it really puts the pressure on staff, the CEO's office, all department heads, to really come in at or under budget. I mean, because it's real clear that, you know, we, we, I really appreciate our, our workforce out there, and I can understand why they're real resistant to salary reductions. Nobody wants to take less, more money, because everything seems to be costing less. But it, it seems at this point, we're really kind of counting on that and putting a lot of pressure on them. I'm not so sure we're going to be that successful. But, you know, on, on the other hand, that, on the kind of the liberal side of me, I think, well, on a two hundred and seventeen million dollar budget, if you're out of whack, two and a half million dollars, that's what, that, half a percent? I mean, we're, we're not that far out of whack anyway. So, at this point in time, we need to, ten more hours of discussion on this issue is not going to change anything. And so I'm willing to vote for the motion and move it forward.
Okay. But I want to ask Supervisor Colfax, do you have any concluding remark?
Well, for one thing, I'd like to say that I, I think some of the comments made by supervisors here on my left and right entirely inappropriate. Having said that, I think even as we talk right now, there is not an understanding of how simple this is. You said third grade point, John, pay attention to what you learned in third grade. And that is, you can't vote for this knowing what you know. This particular, unless we're going to say we'll come back and visit it later on. We can come back and visit this allocation later on. But I think this discussion, for all the noise and all the emotion, has brought out something that we have had people in law enforcement saying, oh, well, that's, that's, that's surprising, we didn't know about that until now. And so I think that's worthwhile, and I think that is what we should be paying attention to. That's our job up here, to get things out, not be polite, not be friendly, not get along in the hope of somehow or other keeping things nice and smooth. We've got to solve this problem. And that's why I say to Supervisor Pinches, I think you're, you understand what the situation is, and I think at this point, you vote for this budget, or you don't, vote it up or vote it down, and we come back and revisit it at some future point. But I think this has to be resolved. I see Carmo nodding at some times when I agree with her, and sometimes I disagree with her on this whole matter. So I'm not sure it's all that clear, even to the people who are closest to it. I think it's simple, and I think it needs to be taken care of. But I'd also like to get out of here today, because I think here, we put a lot of time and energy into this, and I, I know you have, Supervisor, Madam Chair.
Clerk, please read the motion.
Upon motion by Supervisor McCowen and seconded by Supervisor Pinches, the Board of Supervisors accept the 2010, 2011 final budget and position allocation tables as scheduled for adoption on September 14th, 2010.
No, 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 no. No. What the board is doing is you're accepting the final budget amendments that were made to the proposed budget, in addition to all of the other issues that you voted on, and combine, and so the board needs to vote on this last piece, okay? And then direct staff to come back with the final budget on March, on September 14th with the position allocation table.
Okay.
Clear? Okay? Yeah.
All supervisors understand, we're going to vote by the button. Please do so.
Motion passes three to two with Supervisor Smith and Colfax dissenting.
Thank you. We do have an off-agenda item requested by Supervisor John Pinches. Supervisor Pinches, it's going to take a four-fifths vote, please introduce your item.
This is a, the reason this is an emergency is because the Round Valley Library Commons Project, they're applying for a grant for a community kitchen, and this is the last day that can't, that, that they can take the application, get it off, and we don't have a meeting next week, so it's too late. That's the, that is the, this is just, I'm looking for a supportive letter.
First thing, off agenda.
Yeah, that's the reason for the off agenda, because of the urgency.
I move that we make the findings to add the item to the agenda based on the explanation.
It's been moved by Supervisor McCowen to accept this item onto the agenda.
Seconded.
And they're seconded by Supervisor Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. Clerk, please clear the vote off the board. Thank you. Okay, now for the items, supervisor-
Madam Chair, this is just a letter of support for Round Valley Library Commons Project to USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant Program 2011 for a certified community kitchen at the Round Valley Line, Library Commons Project. When we are at the board meeting over there in Kowloon, I think some of you turned the area back, to the back of the building where they're hoping to put it. So this is just a letter of support, and I would urge your unanimous vote.
Make sure.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Pinches, seconded by Supervisor Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. unanimous vote.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I, I didn't hear, did you close the public hearing for the budget?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So we end the day on a unanimous vote?
Okay. Is that it?
I hope so.
Okay. We need to do an announcement, because we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, how do we properly do that?
There is none.
There is none, as long as it hasn't been continued.
No.
Okay.
We close, we close here.
Yeah. Okay.
Just a placeholder.
So I did, yeah.
Just a placeholder.
Okay. No announcement necessary then. Thank you, and we'll adjourn the meeting. Clerk, let it reflect that it's at 6:04.